Let's move to agenda item 15, the golden motion on the governance of Bristol City Council. And I'll call councillor Hartley of the Liberal Democrat Group to propose the motion. Councillor Hartley, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For the last 10 years Bristol has undergone an experiment in city governance following a local referendum. This referendum passed on a very low turnout, meaning only 13% of Bristolians voted for the mayoral system, hardly a compelling mandate. Many people voted for a mayoral system in order to improve the governance of the city due to perceived instability, a history lesson for members. The instability was primarily the cause of repeated Labour resignations from power in the mid-2000s, that and having elections to council every year. As a council working cross-party, we were able to deliver for Bristol, redeveloping Cannon's Marsh and Broadmead, improving our waste services some of the best in the country, and building more affordable homes than under either of our two mayors. Neighborhood partnerships allowed local people to participate in their communities in an active and engaged way. Since the mayoral model came in, we have seen, among other disasters, the loss of nearly 50 million on an energy company, embarrassing court defeats costing many millions over illegal cuts to the SEND provision, the Arena fiasco, and Bristol residents being ignored over Cumberland Basin and RPZs. This will be enough for most objective observers to at least acknowledge that this leadership model is not working as hoped. But the usual mayoral cheerleaders, the current mayor himself, big business, and major property developers are out in force now to defend the system that benefits them so much. One person cannot hope to have the breadth of knowledge and time that is required to run a complex city like Bristol as well as listen to the views of local residents, especially when they have a side gig as a director of a local film studio. It is fundamentally wrong that one person can overrule the will of a majority of elected councillors, as happened over the Arena. One person now effectively rules with absolute power. I will remind councillors of the old adage, absolute power corrupts absolutely. In 2017, we elected our Metro Mayor for the west of England, who fulfills the duties of cheerleader-in-chief of the region as well as controlling transport skills and housebuilding. We are now in the absurd position of having two mayors, with the Bristol mayor now being the spare mayor. Our preferred replacement is the committee system, which is fairer, more proportional, and conducive to a long-term strategy for improving Bristol. By allowing councillors to work together on cross-party committees, we can improve that governance while allowing for everyone to have a voice in a proportionally balanced way. It will mean that no one person will be able to single-handedly make decisions that affect all Bristolians, and that the vote of all councillors will mean something, unlike the charade of the council vote on the City Centre Arena. A move to a committee system will ensure greater transparency and accountability around council decisions. It will also involve a wider cross-section of voices being heard and engaged in the whole decision-making process, and be much more open to engagement and scrutiny, more importantly, by members of the public. All of us here in this chamber serve at the pleasure of our residents, and they deserve to have their voice heard. It is time for the people of Bristol to have the opportunity to reflect on the last 10 years, and now that they have the evidence, give them a chance to vote on the mayoral model and to scrap the mayor. If the mayor and Labour members-
Councillor Hartley, can you wind up now, please?
If the mayor and Labour members are so confident in the mayoral model, then surely they think they'll win the referendum, and they should take up the challenge and vote for this motion. I implore all members to vote for this motion and help to bring greater democracy and accountability back to Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll now call councillor Portney of the Green Group to second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I rise to second my colleague's motion. 10 years ago, 24% of the eligible voters of Bristol voted in a referendum to decide how our city would be run, just shy of 13% of them voted for a change, for a system of having the city run by a single elected mayor. And proponents of this system said that it would increase accountability, that it would unlock millions of pounds of investment from central government, that it would enable us to deliver large-scale, long-term projects like an arena. That was 10 years ago. And people have now seen the reality of the mayoral system. It's now time to give the people of Bristol the opportunity to revisit that decision and to make a choice, not on the basis of promises but on the basis of the evidence before their eyes. As Greens- Oh, and the same thing's happened to me! As Greens, we support giving people a voice in the decisions that affect the city and their lives. This motion invites us to imagine what could be achieved if the council's policies were motivated by the desire to fix the issues that we see every day in our communities. This is one of those ideas that sounds quite radical in this building. I promise you, it sounds blindingly obvious to everyone outside it. What my colleague has put forward is a return not to the past but to something more exciting. Not a return to leader and cabinet, which would still be preferable to a mayor, but a committee system that rewards consensus. Councillors working together with each other to champion the communities they represent, enhancing democracy, delivering real scrutiny, a system that would empower people and bring the voices of every neighbourhood and every community of our city into the policymaking process. I see from the panicked pieces that have appeared in the media in the last week that the Labour administration have already begun trying to frame the referendum debate. Council, democracy is not in opposition to ambition. Democracy is essential. Democracy leads to better outcomes, and the party opposite should have more faith in the people of Bristol and more confidence in its own ideas. A committee system means that good ideas can thrive through debate and discussion and, dare I say, working together to find common ground. That's what will deliver the long-term policy commitments that let our partners plan with certainty. What a committee system would not allow, however, is a single, unaccountable decision-maker to blindly storm ahead, ignoring, patronising, or steamrolling over local communities and calling that leadership. Instead, we would have to find agreement and compromise in a system that would reward those that can articulate and persuade the city that they have the better vision. Bristol deserves another say on how our city is governed. I have faith in Bristol to make choices for itself. The question is, does the party opposite? I urge you all to vote for the motion.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to debate on the motion, and I'll call councillor Pearce to speak on behalf of the Labour Group. Councillor Pearce, you have three minutes, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Hopefully, my technology won't let me down. So, we reach the high point, what should be the high point of the city's monthly civic life, debates in full council. How are we spending it? We're contemplating our own navel. We've just had an election. The public was so incensed at the mayor that he was returned. They were so determined to eliminate the office that the two parties most committed to doing so couldn't muster 30% of the vote. Nonetheless, Liberal Democrat colleagues have brought this motion. Conservative colleagues, the evidence of petitions that they've set would suggest that this isn't exactly what they had in mind, this motion. Greens, we may or may not see a settled view amongst them this evening. Meanwhile, Labour Mayor, his administration, and the Labour Party are trying to deliver against our many serious challenges in the city. What does the city really need us to address? Well, we could be discussing a cost-of-living crisis, the city's response to COP26, an environmental emergency, an ecological emergency, a housing crisis, a public health crisis. Yes, Covid's still around. A response to the refugee crisis, government funding of public transport, and whether it will be enough to keep the buses running. Last month, my party was prevented from debating the social care crisis. Hopefully, we'll get round to that this evening, now that we've voted to extend time. Are we addressing these issues? No. We're focused this evening on internal processes. This is the most important decade of modern human civilisation, the most important decade which ends at 2030. We should need clear and decisive action, not the bargaining of parochial interests. Today, we've been reduced to talking about expending energy, time, and no small amount of treasure on belly button fluff.
I now call councillor MacCary of the Green Group, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. After almost 10 years, this issue here is, do we want a referendum to ask the people of Bristol if they want a mayor or committee system? Or do they want a single personality like a mayor to control most city decisions for four years and curb? Or do we want your own voice to be heard? The Green Party also believe that local authority run by directly elected mayor are not the best interest of local democracy. They take decision-making power away from the councillor and the council as whole, and place them in hand of few individuals, even just one person, leading to the disenfranchised men of those councillors who are not in the ruling party and the citizens they represent. However, we do agree with democracy, and if the people of Bristol want elected mayor, we will field a candidate who will positively raise to the challenge and bring more positive green policies and participation options like a citizen assembly we initiate. I really do believe that you should vote for this motion. Because the committee system will provide direct member involvement in decision-making means that the process of governing the city would be most democratic and accountable, and a committee system does give a louder voice to minority parties and independents and more power to elected councillor. Currently, the Green Party has equal number of councillor to the Labour Party, representing world around Bristol City. And yet, not one cabinet member is on no real steers on local policy and decision-making practice, because policy developments always brought for timely cross-party scrutiny input. In fact, the Labour Party also have 24 councillor, most of them disposed of power by the mayor, with only a handful of Labour councillor in his cabinet making decisions. So it is also your voice and those you represent not being heard. I will tell you now, undemocratically, I will tell you how undemocratically this is. Your voice not being heard regarding livable neighbourhood, high-rise building, school places, green space, air quality, serious ambition of climate change, and strategy of descent public transport system. I hope you are listening at home, because we need you to hear this debate and consider the democracy which is at stake. Here, the Labour Party, who you have trusted to represent you, would prefer to be led by majority of one person only. Do you want single personality like a mayor to control most city decisions for four years? Or do you want your own voice to be heard? Vote for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll now call councillor Weston to speak on behalf of the Conservative Group.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. And no poetry, you'll be happy to hear. Maybe later. Councillor Pearce makes some interesting comments, some of which he's right on, some of which I'm afraid we're going to disagree on. You list an awful lot of things that are important. You are correct. In almost every one of them, I would say you are correct, about all of them. You are also correct when you say the next decade is possibly the most important that we're going to have this century, but I think every decade says that. What, though, you're not correct on is dismissing so lightly democracy. Because actually, the next decade, the next decade itself globally is going to be defined by a clash of ideals and a clash of systems, and one of which is democracy and accountability. We saw that rumble through the noughties, we saw that rumble through into the teens, and now it's going on. To try and dismiss so lightly concerns about an arbitrary political system is unfounded and unfair. The mayoral model is designed to ride roughshod over democracy. Those aren't my words, they're the words of Karen Smith MP from your party. And if you raise the Prime Minister, the Prime Minister has more checks and balances on his authority than the mayor does here, because the Prime Minister could be removed by his own party. If all of you disagree with the mayor, he still can do whatever he likes. There is no check or balance in the system. Now, regardless of who is in the chair, the system itself is flawed, and surely you will recognise that. Now, there is no doubt, while of the systems we have on offer, our preference would be the cabinet and the leader model. However, what we can all agree on on this side is that the weakest system is the mayoral one. It is the one with the least amount of accountability and oversight. So we are going to be backing the motion today. Now, in 2012, when the referendum was put, we were in a completely different situation. Since then, two things have changed. We had the instability because we had constant elections. The two things have changed. We have the Weckham Mayor and the regional governments. We know that that is the driver the government is looking at, and we've seen what happens up in Birmingham and in Manchester, and we can see the goal there. But the stability has come from councillors being all-out elected. I hate to say it, but occasionally councillor Kenton was right, because like Nostradamus in the corner, an orange Nostradamus. He actually said that they would do it, and I'm never going to repeat this again, it tastes like vinegar, but he was correct in that. The situation has changed. So what we're saying now is we need to look again and ask the public for a change of system, one that I believe will be fairer, one that I believe will give a greater voice to councillors, to communities, to suburbs, which all too often feel ignored. So my group will be backing this motion today, wholeheartedly. And to be honest, you really should too. And I look forward to going on the campaign trail with Karen Smith MP. That'll be an interesting turn of events. I'm sure she's looking forward to it as well. Thank you very much, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. I now call councillor Varney to speak on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. As I mentioned during my statement in Members' Forum earlier today, I don't think Bristolians realised quite how much power they were handing over to one person when a tiny fraction of them narrowly voted to launch the mayoral experiment 10 years ago. If at that time they had been told that votes in full council would be ignored, if they had been told that city elites would have a seat at the top table while ordinary people and their directly elected representatives would be marginalised, if they had been told that decisions would be made behind closed doors with little accountability and scrutiny, I think the results of that mayoral referendum would have been very different indeed. Now, proponents of the mayoral experiment claim that highly visible leadership is good for the city, but it is also very, very good for the holder of the post. Having a directly elected mayor risks having a leader who is less interested in serving the people of Bristol and rather more interested in feathering their own nest and using the position as a springboard to furthering their own careers. Those in favour of the mayoral experiment also point to strong leadership as a plus point. But what is strong about insulting your opponents here in the chamber and blocking them on Twitter? What is strong about stuffing your cabinet with an ever-dwindling supply of yes people from your own benches while ignoring the talent that exists on all benches here in this chamber for fear of being contradicted? That is not strength, that is weakness. Supporters of the mayoral experiment also say that holding a referendum will be an unnecessary expense at a time of budgetary constraints. But I ask you, can we afford not to hold it? In recent years, we've seen an inordinate amount of waste. Poor decision-making has cost all of us dearly, with tens of millions of pounds wasted on failed vanity projects such as Bristol Energy and Bristol Arena. Under a mayoral system of governance, we were unable to stop these poor decisions and unable to prevent so much waste. Fellow councillors do not despair. Luckily, in the Localism Act of 2011, former Liberal Democrat leader of the council Baroness Barbara Jank had the foresight to include a mechanism allowing for referenda on abolishing directly elected mayors after a period of 10 years. Next May will be the 10th anniversary of the mayoral experiment here in Bristol. At that point, I think it's reasonable and appropriate to go back to the people of Bristol and ask them if they want to continue with it or if they want to consign it to the dustbin of history where it belongs. I urge you to vote for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now call councillor Cole to speak on behalf of the Labour Group. Councillor Cole, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So we should all want the most democratic process to choose how the city is run. Having people choose their city leader themselves is the most democratic way to do this. Bristolians should not just be given the binary choice of between a mayor and a committee system, they should have all the options in front of them. And once they have explored them, whichever they decide is best for the city should be what is on the referendum. In 2012, Bristol held a mayoral referendum, as we know, and yes, the mayoral system was chosen. The introduction of the mayoral system gave all residents in the city the opportunity to participate at a process that elects the mayor of Bristol, one of the most influential positions in the city. So this changed the system from the system which meant that the leader of the council was voted on by the council members, excluding direct participation from the majority of residents. As it stands, the committee system would select a leader in exactly the same way, disempowering residents. There would definitely be a reduction in the number of citizens engaged in the process to elect the leader of the council. The process of direct election shows each resident that they are respected and valued. It's in the candidate's interests to communicate with them, and as many residents as possible are being encouraged to vote and exercise their democratic right. When compared to the elections of MPs, the mayoral elections has a higher turnout, and just like MPs, residents have the power to remove the mayor at the next election if they don't deliver. The committee system does not give direct opportunity to residents to remove the leader of the council if they don't deliver. During the last election, some parties said if elected, they would remove the mayoral system. Despite this being their headline policy, they only got 29% of the vote between them. Petitions seeking resident support have not raised the required numbers to trigger a debate. This suggests that right now, there's no public appetite for a referendum. If that is the case, then holding one now would be self-indulgent. As councillors, we should unite on delivering Bristol's priorities. Our citizens are stakeholders in our city, they are the people who elect us, they are the people who we say we serve. It is not fair for them to be given just these two options. Bristol is much more than city all, which should not affect what we debate here but also the 340,000 people who have a right to vote and have a right to say who leads us, and not just the 70 who sit in this room today.
Thank you very much. And I now call councillor Stone of the Green Group.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support thoroughly the need to hold a referendum, and I applaud the Liberal Democrat Party to bring this motion to full council. Look, life's a bit of an experiment, in my opinion, and maybe it is time to review this model and make the people of Bristol, ask the people of Bristol, I should say, for maybe a more democratic form of governance. Because the Green Party will welcome that, and as it is the most important decade, all citizens need to be heard with a governance that actually does get stuff done, because believe it or not, it does, it's not just the mayoral model that gets things done. As a part of the Green Party, I am proud to support the less vocal. We encourage discussion and argument. We welcome as many people to the table as we possibly can to participate in grown-up debates, unlike other parties who mostly whip their members on any important decision and hide behind the mayor for accountability. Do you know what? I can smell blood sometimes in this room. Personally, I prefer to clean my own belly button than be whipped. As you've heard, the Green Party believes that local authorities run by directly elected mayors are not in the best interest of local democracy, and that councillors in a committee system are directly accountable to the residents. Surely, that must be a better system for our citizens of Bristol. However, we do uphold democracy and the democratic practices. And if the people of Bristol want an elected mayor-
If they want it, probably they can have it.
Yeah, and if the people want an elected mayor, then they can have it. So bring it on, though you know that will cause an absolute media frenzy, and I see a series of squid games emerging, to be honest with you. However, I would also like you to appreciate that if there was a Green mayor, I'm sure they would throw the ring into the volcano of Mordor and happily rescind their powers. There will be more accountability with terms of reference and not a revolving door of transport cabinet members. What is it, six in six years? As you may guess, I really do believe that this motion should be positively supported and voted for, because it will allow the people of Bristol the opportunity to embrace a better democracy. Thank you. Please vote for this motion.
Thank you very much. I now call councillor Eddy to speak on behalf of the Conservative Group.
Lord Mayor, before I start my speech, I just want to reply to something that councillor Cole said regarding the appetite for change here in Bristol. I'll be honest, every time I go out in my ward, to the local shops, to the news agency, the issue I'm taught and the question I'm asked the most is, well, Richard, when can I get the chance to get rid of this mayor? There is a real appetite, a hunger for change in this city. Lord Mayor, experience provides some helpful insights. Having originally been elected 30 years ago in May next year, almost a third of my time was spent with the previous committee system. Over a third of my time has been spent under the leader and cabinet model, and the remainder under the mayoral model, of course. At the start, we had a strong Labour council with a strong Tory opposition. We then entered a period of almost one-party state. Labour had a massive majority of over 50 seats and the two opposition parties, single-figure tellers. By 2004, Labour had lost its dominance and its majority. We had a rainbow cabinet- We had a rainbow cabinet of the three parties, in which I was privileged to serve for 80 months. For the remainder of the 2000s and 00s, we had the seesaw of minority Labour and Lib Dem councils before the Lib Dems won a small working majority. Of course, the coalition government held referenda in 10 cities in 2012, of which Bristol was the only one to consent to the mayoral experiment. I strongly believe the reason the majority of Bristol electors and myself sadly voted then for the mayoral model was because we understood the arguments that it would give more transparent leadership and avoid the political intuition of noughties. Of course, as for example councillor Weston has mentioned, the council has since embraced the all-up four-yearly elections, ending as a stroke the tendencies of all political administrations to be guided by next-mostin popularity. This council debated a similar motion to today's GAWA motion much, but of course, in May, over half the councillors were newly elected, so you didn't have a chance to be asked your views about a mayoral referendum. I imagine everyone elected in May did so on the basis of changing for the better their local community.
Councillor Eddy, could you wind up, please?
My golly, Lord Mayor. It well came to a shock to all of you that frankly, we have very little power, the mayor has 95%. So I believe there's less transparency, less accountability, and less democracy than ever. Clearly, we need to change. The elected mayor frankly is election by elected dictator. Support today's GAWA motion, please.
Thank you, and I now call councillor Clark on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group.
Thank you very much, my lord mayor. Thank you for all your contributions to the debate today. It has been interesting to hear a range of differing views and perspectives. I'm acutely aware that I am the last speaker today, and it seems to be as usual, actually. Before the summing up, and much has been said already, but I just wanted to make a couple of points. This motion is an opportunity to ask the city how we want to govern our city after 10 years of the mayoral system. The motion is not about personality or individuals, this referendum is about asking the public how they want to see their city run in the future. Our motion asks the public to support a different model of governance, and the committee system is a democratic way of making evidence-based decisions. Residents do not like the fact that councillors vote and are seen to be making a decision. For instance, we have the Arena debacle, which has been spoken about already on Temple Island, and almost immediately after that vote in full council in support of the arena down at Temple Island, the decision was to build it at Filton. I would also like to thank, at this point, former Liberal Democrat councillor and leader Baroness Jank for making it possible for us to have this citywide conversation in the form of a referendum, so thank you, Barbara, for all your work. And finally, I respect the fact that the Labour Group decided not to submit their amendment calling for a referendum and proposing the cabinet model. This was surprising, as they voted against this model only just a few months ago. Unsurprisingly, my group and myself will be supporting this motion to start the conversation with the whole city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes the debate. Councillor Hartley is mover of the motion. Would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to firstly thank my colleagues in Lib Dem, Conservative and Green Groups for their support for this motion. To the Labour Group, rather than try to convince you myself, I hope the thought of Labour politicians on the mayoral system will convince you instead. Former Labour Cabinet Member and councillor Paul Smith said, backbench councillors are like mere window dressing. Former Labour councillor Mike Davis said, under the mayoral system, so much experience, talent and expertise has gone wasted. Former Labour councillor Jo Sargent said she'd be campaigning for a committee system which enables true democracy and accountability. And former Labour councillor Harriet Bradley said, local democracy is threatened by the institution of the mayoralty. Your former colleagues understand that we need a referendum. Earlier councillor Pearce said that we need clear and decisive action. Well then, Steve, support this motion, put the issue to bed in a referendum, then we can move on clearly and decisively. Both the Labour speakers said there's no public support for a referendum. While echoing councillor Eddy, many residents of my ward have repeatedly asked me when we can get rid of the mayoral system. Out of 32 public statements in public forum this evening on this motion, only one supported the mayoral system, and that was from a business lobby group. The people of Bristol want and deserve this referendum. I compel members this evening to back democracy, back accountability, back good governance, and back this motion. Thank you.
Mayor Rees, would you like to respond to the debate?
So with all the mayors around the world, I didn't know that we were working together to undermine democracy, the 300 city networks that are around there. So let me start by saying, I've already been clear that I am not standing again, so I'm not talking about my future within the city, despite one of the councillors' statements, I'm talking about the future of city. It's also worth pointing out, just as a matter of knowledge and improving the quality of debate, the Metro Mayor is not the same as the City Mayor, it's a very different role. They have the same word, but it's not the same role, and it's really important that as we talk to the city, we are clear about that. And also to just remind you, it's really interesting, all these conversations people are having about the mayor. I went to the Weatherspoons pub just a few weeks ago after Remembrance Day, none of the squaddies in the pub were talking to me about the mayoral model. And Paul Hassan posted on Facebook, is this pantomime season? And I think that that really captures it. First off, if I could just work through these things. We face challenges in Bristol right now, has been set out, adult social care, cost of living crisis, housing crisis, climate change, ecological emergency, Covid recovery. We could be debating those challenges here today, instead we're talking about ourselves. And actually, if you want an example of what happens when the council gets together and talks about itself, rather than the mayoral model, which I think has liberated political leadership to engage with the city, it is right here this evening. Rather than those crises, we are talking about internal structures and processes. And the second thing I'd say on the substance is this, the question is not what makes us comfortable, the question is what model of leadership will enable us to deliver the challenges at the scale and pace they are facing us right now. Ecological emergency, climate emergency, inequality, the global migration crisis, housing crisis. No one has said, no one has asked the question, what model of governance will enable us to deliver the challenges Bristol faces right now? And actually, form follows function, we need to deliver a model that will enable us to deliver the urgency of those challenges right now. If you ask that question in an honest way, you know, fill your boots, if you think that the committee system would deliver that leadership with that pace, then great, make the argument. But please don't, please don't do a disservice to those people in the city who have fled oppressive regimes and dictatorships by claiming that they're here in Bristol. If you talk to some of my friends who have come to this city, and you start talking to them about despotism and Stalinism and all that type of stuff that I'm supposed to embody, it's an absolute insult to people who have made their way through refugee camps. Don't do that. Secondly, sorry, I'm running out of time, Lord Mayor, but I mean, there's so much to say here. Democracy, again, invisibility of decision-making is one of the ways to undermine democracy. You have visible leadership in the mayoral model. People want to know when they can get rid of me? They had a chance in May, and then now I'll be gone in 2024. One of the things that you're talking about here is taking away a vote from the people of Bristol to choose who their political leadership is. What will happen is, the decisions over leadership or non-leadership will happen in this room, and the inability to make decisions will be made anonymously in committee rooms in this building, just like they used to. And I've lived in this city for a long time, I worked under the leadership that people have talked about, I worked under councillor Hopkins, and in my time working in the NHS and working at the council, look, I don't want to burst any bubbles, but we were not a smooth-delivering city that was breaking ground and building national reputation for delivery. That history just never, ever existed.
You are running out of time, or have run out of time.
Can I just make one final point, and I'll just choose this one carefully? A lot of people have talked about delivery. Again, there was no history of delivery. Many of the controversies that we face right now are because we are getting stuff done, whether it be building houses, putting in pedestrianisation, the Clean Air Zone, the bus gates, tackling child hunger, revamping the whole housing letting system. Stuff is happening, to say that it's not, it's just flatly untrue. So let's have the debate, but let's make it a mature debate in which we're really honest about the ups and downs of the different options that we face.
Thank you. I think the point's made. Thank you very much. We're going to move to the vote now, this is going to be an electronic vote, soon as we are ready. Please vote now. Okay, so we have 41 votes for, 24 against, and two abstentions, so the motion is carried. Thank you. We're going to move straight on to the silver motion, and I call councillor Holland on behalf of the Labour Group to move the motion, please. Councillor Holland, you have three minutes.